Okay. It is six thirty-five and I'm gonna call the water board special meeting to order. Is there anything to add or delete? Okay. Public comments, so there's nobody in the room and probably nobody on the.
Right.
What does that screen say? Public quality something? Anyway, it's just us, so there is no public comment. So the new business is the wellhouse drainage issue and in front of be everybody is a sketched map of the wellhouse up on one, uh, Southway. It was at Warrenburg. So Josh, do you wanna kind of walk through this? I've you and I have talked about it, but everybody else needs to be brought up to speak.
Yep, so about three days after I started, um, this drainage line in the bottom of the well pit, um, started backing up. Uh, currently it was designed to accept the well if it ever were to overflow, it would take that flow. As well as that, it takes our recirculating, uh, lines, so we can take chlorine samples. So there's constant flow through it all the time. That line's only like an inch. So there's not too, too much water going through that, but it is constant. Um. So needless to say, it's been maintaining like a foot of water in the bottom of it, um, and.
In the bottom of what?
Inside the well.
In the well pit, so it's basically a basement. And all the well shaft comes up and then the lines that run to the tank, storage tank, and then also down South Road. It's roughly eight feet deep. Um, so if we were to ever lose power, um, or whatnot, the well stopped working, it would eventually overflow into the pit. And this line would basically take, I'm assuming it was designed to take the entire flow, um. So it's very important that it drains. And it hasn't been, it's been maintaining like a foot, foot and a half, um, in the pit for a couple of months now. Um, there must be a crack or whatnot in the blocks, so it's draining out of that, but it's certainly something that needs to get fixed. So I had Aaron Perez come down because it's a plastic line, either six or eight inch. And we traced it out to about eight feet, so we could get the snake out too. And when we brought the snake back in, it was full of roots on the end of it. So obviously it's, the main issue is it's blocked with roots. So it's roughly to where the roots start, we're like a foot and a half to two feet away from the stone wall. Um, and it's flat till you hit the stone wall, then it drops down six feet. And then it's kind of like a little gully, um, and then it climbs back up to where his house and his garage are located. Um, so my thought was to run the drainage line, um, daylight it into the stone wall so we'd have access. So if this ever happened again, we'd be able to clean it out and keep it maintained. Um, I don't know if it goes to the stone wall. I don't know if it kind of just dead ends there and there's a bunch of crushed stone. We'll have to kind of discover that. The neighbor, um, more or less expressed to me that he does not want anything on the other side of that stone wall. So and obviously trying to be good with our neighbors and not, um, get anybody upset. I expressed to him that we would start like a foot or two away from the building, follow the pipe out, um, and then see where it goes, but basically expressed to him that I would like to replace it the same way it was put in because it's lasted this long without issues before. Um, so I think he's okay with it as long as we don't touch the stone wall and whatnot, once we start digging it and then come show him what the pipe looks like, um, afterwards, but.
So you, so the pipe goes to close to the stone wall.
It's about a foot and a halfway.
And there's roots there, but you don't actually know what happens at the stone wall because it's below the stone wall.
It's six feet down.
It's six feet below the stone wall.
Well, it's six feet down from the top of the ground to the top of the pipe.
Yeah, so six feet below.
So the stone wall starts level where the wellhouse is. So it's level with the ground here and then it drops down six hundred feet here. So this is level.
Okay, can we drop from the side? Okay, here's the ground. Here's the stone wall. Okay, what are we doing?
Okay, so wellhouse, stone wall, neighbor's property, and then there's a dip and then it goes back up.
How is that a stone wall?
Well, it just is.
It's not tipped.
It's not like your typical Vermont storm wall. You drive down the road and it's built up to three feet.
Rip wrap almost.
Yes. So.
I don't, I don't understand where the pipe is then.
So the pipe is, there's a pit down here and the pipe is at the very bottom and it runs over to the stone wall and all they can do is trace it that far and it's about two feet away from.
So, so and that's why you're saying you don't know if the water's actually going into this drainage ditch or if it's going into the ground here or if there's another pipe?
I don't know if it's daylighted or just barely daylighted to the stone wall or it's just stops just before the stone wall.
So are you gonna remove the stones?
Well, eventually probably yes, we're gonna have to remove the stone wall.
If it daylight, that's the way to get to the part that, I mean, if it's a rip wrap, it's not what I would call a stone wall.
Sure.
Okay, and have you checked with Burr?
Uh, he doesn't know anything about it. So. Uh, not when it comes out, so I don't know when we get to it, what it will be.
Plastic, but it's plastic.
Yeah.
So it's not like.
To me, it wouldn't be. To me, it would have. I think it would have day, not daylighted, but maybe run just almost to the stone and then then maybe, and then leach out slowly. And that's why he's never seen any water or a pipe on his property. And that's what I intend to replace.
Stone is probably at least a couple of feet.
Yeah.
Thick, thick?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
So that, that was my thought.
Is it gravelly soil around there or is it clay?
I don't know that.
I thought you were digging in it.
Yeah. No, he's a snake.
And it can't look in the inside.
And he can't get to it from the far end, so you really can't.
No.
Line jet it.
No. Then that's my whole point of having it open, which I know he is not.
Because if it was open on the other side, you could go back in with a jetter.
Yeah, well, we would have to screen it and then obviously it'd be a full length of pipe, so obviously the roots would either have to come in or they would have to go through a joint if you glue that, it's very unlinked.
Is there trees all the way?
There's, there must have been trees there before. But it's more or less small shrubs now. But obviously it's been there for thirty, forty years or something, so.
When did they start?
Yeah.
Late sixties, early seventies, I think. I don't know.
Really?
So I'm gonna try to do everything I can not to disturb the stone wall because we're assuming that's the property boundary.
Yeah, so who owns that though?
Yeah, that's, it's right on the line.
But it's several feet deep.
Yes.
I mean, it matters if the, if the property line is on this side or on this side.
And our property lines on that are really poorly mediated because the, our deed is a four or not a D. Uh, for this property because of it, because the property was seized by eminent domain when it was established. So you don't get a D with that and get an eminent domain court.
So that.
Isn't that special?
It is a super fun.
So I see that you're, might have to redo drainage on the property owner's side in the summer.
Yeah, so when it, so his driveway, you see it kind of hugs down and it's more or less long, but he uses it as a driveway. And it's a very low point, um, just where it makes the turn to go up to the garage.
Yeah.
Yeah, and basically if I was to push it all the way through the stone, we're gonna have issues with. So we would have to do some drainage work for him. So my hope was to stop it just before the stone wall again, like it was, clear all the brush out. And, um, it was good for a lot of years.
And if it's just running down, if it's just sinking down into the ground, you know, then presumably, I just wonder how high the water table is over there. If you're already six feet down, you know, where's your water table?
Yeah, that I don't know.
Okay, but it worked, but it worked, whatever. Okay, but, but whatever system it was, it worked.
It worked for a long time, so that's what my hope was to do that and.
Get it cleared up. So you're gonna, you're gonna somehow dig it, dig it.
Inevitably, no, we're not, we're gonna put the back over here. And we're gonna dig it like this.
Why? Because you're gonna replace it?
Well, because we don't wanna sit the excavator on his side and dig it this way.
Yep.
So, yes, ideally you would go with the pipe. So inevitably, I'm probably gonna have to take at least some of the stone wall out just to replace it, um. But I think once I get closer, we get to that point, once we expose it, he kind of sees that it's what's there, it's was existing. That's all I wanna do is replace it.
Right, and he didn't have problems.
Could you alleviate the need to put it on, come out the stone wall and potentially have to deal with this drainage if we put a drywall in there?
Well, and that's other thing, I, I don't know what's there, so it's kind of have, gonna have to be a case by case.
Do you know what I mean? Like put a drywall in with a riser if it comes up, so you could service it.
Yep.
A T with a perforated pipe in a trench parallel with the stone wall, I mean, that would also.
And my thought was, yeah, to put like a wire, something like a sewer line almost, so you could get in there and at least jet it or whatever, yeah.
And that would also probably alleviate any weepage in his.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, because it would give it more service area and distance to go. That would be I.
Either ninety or twenty.
I kinda lean towards, let's try to avoid getting water on the neighboring property.
Even if you gotta shorten that pipe back just to be able to.
Yeah.
Tee it in the trench.
And we don't wanna go, we don't wanna go towards the road because the South Road line comes out of the building on an angle, like with the pipe and then I don't know how it angles over here. So we don't wanna go too far that way.
Have to go far.
No, no.
Well, we were talking about you put a T here and you kind of go like that with it. And maybe you put a, maybe you come back a little bit and you put a D box here with a riser on it and then you go this way and this way.
And the other thing is if you, if you end up disturbing the stone rip wrap or embankment, it's almost like an embankment. Take pictures of it before you do that, so that you have a chance of putting them back.
And I told him we would replace, you know, we would make it look like it did before.
Right, right.
But yes, my goal is to not to not disturb or put water over here, but inevitably just to fix this.
You're just like fixing it and you're putting it back and the water, keep the water on our side.
Probably have to disturb the stone wall regardless.
So, but you don't think that the amount of water in that basement has anything to do with anything except this drainage is not working?
Correct. Yeah, because there's a pipe going into it, there's blockers of roots.
And it's six foot down, so it's just getting groundwater.
The well pumps more water than we use, right? That's what this is from?
No, this is, the well runs constant. If the well ever shut down, it's gonna overflow. Say we lost power to everything, it's gonna just overflow. And then if it fills up that pit, it's running up above where there's power and everything else and we don't want that to happen.
And it's six foot down, it's probably just getting groundwater.
Yeah.
In there.
Would be the issue.
Yeah.
So, and then I've seen sewer pipes where there's a root ball and it's five, six foot long of just solid roots.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm assuming it is.
Water, yeah, they won't.
Um, but yeah, I'll have to assess it once we get down there to see what they had going on before and try to replicate it if not come up with a solution. But trying to also work with the neighbor to be friendly and not just say, hey, we're gonna slap this way wherever we want it.
We don't wanna come in with.
Um, and I did make the mistake of, I went there to dig safe it and I put cones out and I put some two, three feet on the other side of the stone wall, so they could come and dig safe it because you want a bigger area just to see what was in there. And he was not happy with that because he, I think he was thinking that's where we were gonna start excavating. And I tried to explain to him, we just, that was just me laying out. So, and I was like, you know, I should've talked to you before throwing out cones. Um, it's Michael Hayes. And he's lived there for quite a while, so I, I don't think there'll be a problem with water on the other side of the stone wall. I think there's gonna be an issue of taking apart and replacing the rip wrap slash stone wall.
Yeah.
But I think if, once we get close to that point, we show him the pipe and we put it back like we found it, I think it shouldn't be a big deal. And then like I said, I'll have to wait to see what it looks like and then come up with a game plan.
You'll have to, you'll, you really have to wait and see what you find.
Dig it up.
Yeah.
Mark, did you do any work on the wellhouse when that went up there in South Road? And you lived in the property right next to it, where my case is.
Yeah, but I didn't really did any work on the actual well. I needed to put the pipe in that goes up South Road, it goes to three mile power. So nothing with the drainage, it comes out of that. That's what I remember. I went up with Josh and we looked, I got nothing to keep in mind.
But we're, we're gonna be taking the part of the stone wall probably, just to fix whatever's there regardless. Um, so we'll have to wait and see and have him come over and have a discussion with him probably when it's happening.
Yeah, I think Cynthia's point just good before documentation.
Yeah.
And I'm not necessarily opposed to, if he wants something in writing to that effect. I don't think we'd have a problem with putting it in writing, to even put it back the way we found it.
As long as, as long as it includes some conditionals, because we don't know what we're gonna find.
Right.
And we can write that up.
Yeah. And if we need more stone to rebuild it or something.
It could have been put his mind at ease.
Yeah.
Have something in writing that he can enforce too.
Sure. Yeah, I think it'll be.
Well, if we have to daylight it, that'll be a separate conversation if we have to do something with the drainage here.
Yeah, I'm trying to avoid that because there's no great way to do drainage.
And if all you do is find, you know, like you say, two feet of, of roots, you get rid of that, replace the pipe and maybe get shrubs away, you know, then you're probably good.
It's good for another one.
Let's not borrow trouble.
And then doubt like Dan said to the T and put another purple pipe in there right alongside the.
Then you would add.
On our side.
Sure. If it is perforated to begin with, I, I don't know. But yeah, I, I agree with you. We just can't.
It wasn't. If you put perforated pipe parallel to the wall.
Or maybe the, or maybe the, the end part perforated, maybe not the whole thing perforated. You don't wanna drain them back down into the pit, but further out, you know.
No, we could potentially tee it and, um, certainly put in perforated pipe with some stone.
Very inhale of stone around it.
Yep.
Yeah. As long as that won't damage it, I don't think it would, but.
He had much pitch.
All right, well, that sounds like.
No, not a lot.
No, because that, that hole on the other side at the bottom of that stone wall can't be much lower.
It's about, it's almost about the same, yeah.
It's pretty flat right in there.
And that's six foot down, there's probably not a drywall there because it's already six foot down. Drywall would usually start about three, but, um, if we go three to six, because you get much lower than six, you're in groundwater.
Sure.
Right here.
Can I?
We don't actually need any kind of motion.
Okay.
Did you draw?
I did. I did.
Very good job.
It'd be helpful.
Yeah, it, it looks like a beautiful stone wall, but it doesn't look like an embankment, so you should have.
Well, you wanted an elevation.
I need, well, I needed a side view because I couldn't understand that. I needed a side view and it gave me the side view.
I have to, they're still on property risks. I knew exactly what you're talking about.
But yeah, probably planning on something around end of March, April time.
When the ground softened up.
Yeah, no, we can actually, there's no snow. We can take a picture of the stone wall and make sure everything's back to the way it was before.
So you're not actually gonna be doing anything about this instantly? It'll be at the end of March.
Nope, it's been maintaining and I have a pump set up in there. Um, and all I have to do is pull the window up and I have a hose I just slop over, it's got a float, so if it ever got bad, bad, I could just set it up where it just runs nonstop, um, on a flow system. Yep, yep, sub pump with a float on it. So if it ever got to the point where it wasn't maintaining, I have a setup where it, it can be, um.
How high up does the wellhead come in there?
Almost all the, all the way.
Four, okay.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking like, if they'll take it backwards, that we don't, we want to avoid, right?
Sure, sure. Yeah, there's, I don't think there's any of that, um, just with how deep it is and I'm very sure it's just a straight pipe with no holes for at least a while, um, so.
You haven't tried to pump it out and see if it's running back in through the pipe, did you?
Yep, so it'll, it just drains back.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Think it takes a little bit of it, then it gets full, full, um, because that right now we're over the top of that pipe, so I think it's taking a little bit of it, but it's not certainly taking all of it, um.
Roots will do that.
Yep.
All right, so I guess that's that issue. Uh, four part two is revolving loan fund decision.
Okay, so the gist is this, the project of the wellhouse, the South Bay that, um, we are using ARCA funds for. We had previously applied for state revolving loan funds. So after all of the deadlines and all this and the, the rate increase and all that fun stuff, um, we no longer need these funds. Um, because they're covering a project that we can't use them, we have no reason to use them where we already have other funds that are locked in that project.
Um, the South. Use which funds, the revolving?
We don't need the revolving loans.
Funds because we're using ARCA funds. So all I need from you guys, a very simple decision, uh, motion to authorize the rejection of these, like, because we've already funded it something or something like that.
Hard to deter town money. I make a motion to, um, authorize Mr. Zias to reject the Vermont State revolving loan fund, funds for the South Street project.
That good.
Um, given that we have other funding.
I'll second.
Motion made by Cynthia and signed by Matt to, um, authorize the rejection of the state revolving loan funds in favor of the ARCA funds. All those in favor, signify the same line.
Aye.
Any opinions? Motion carries. And I can adjourn the water board at your leisure. If there is no other business for you before the board, I will adjourn the motion to adjourn.
On your mind?
No.
Everything okay?
Everything else is good.
What do I do here?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Jamie and seconded by Matt to adjourn the air, adjourn for the water board meeting.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Got three minutes.
I worded, I worded it as, as a people after, so we can start this right now if you want, but if anyone needs to run the bathroom.
Yeah, take a, take a break. Anybody?
Are you good or do you just wanna meet?
Um.
When we have our executive session personnel?
Yeah.
I didn't know if you needed.
No.
We were texting and I'm like.
Is it? This over?
No.
It never hurt?
Oh.
Well, just tell people this is how.
I was working on a case. But I didn't actually.
Yep.
All right, it is seven o'clock.
Because I'm gonna make you know how to act.
Is there any assistance to this?
We do not.
Public comment. Um, there any, nobody on the floor?
No.
Up the floor, yes.
No, I said.
Oh, okay. Uh, the next item is minutes of the previous meeting we need to approve.
Two more.
Second.
Motion made by Jamie and seconded by Cynthia to approve the last meeting, all those in favor, signify the same line.
Aye.
In the poll. No, and third.
And then the special budget meeting first of all.
Okay.
Um, so as well, it's a special budget meeting.
Special budget meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes of a special budget, budget meeting from February nineteenth.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Jamie to approve minutes of the special budget meeting of February nineteenth twenty twenty-five, all those in favor, signify the same line.
I abstain, I was absent.
Okay. Highways, road standards.
We did half of this last time, but Steve forgot to send the other attachment that we usually do in the same motion, so.
I was thinking, wait a minute.
This is what I did first, we're actually being really honest with this, so we just need a motion to approve the road standards as presented.
I make a motion to approve the town road and bridge standards for the municipality of Arlington, Vermont as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Matt to approve the road standards. Um, document and sign the same, all those in favor, signify the same line.
Aye.
Aye.
In the polls. That's a good. All right, by point two, loader repair award. Is there more than one quote?
No, there's only one quote. And Mark explained why there's only one quote, um, because we had to tear it apart to figure out what was wrong, um.
That is the case. Yeah, so the loader, as y'all know, went down, I called Nick Gass, we located, contact capital contractor, I did, Nicky got it. And he pulled it partway apart, still could not figure out why it wouldn't turn over. They, he called me up, he said, I, I gotta yank the engine out. There's no other way than I'm gonna find out what's wrong, so.
Cause it like wouldn't start, that's.
It wouldn't crank over. It wouldn't turn over, we, even with the bar, you could not turn it.
Like it was like seized up.
Okay.
You could turn it all the way back around to that same spot, but you couldn't turn it completely, you know, over and over and over.
Yep.
So got the oil pan off. So what happened was, um, there's a thing called an EGR cooler that went bad. And antifreeze from that got into one of the cylinders. So when it went to crank over, when the valves were all closed on the compression stroke on that cylinder, piston couldn't come up all the way and it bent the connecting. And when it did that, it banged the line, hit the cylinder, which, which is a liner which can be replaced. Um, the problem is, well, he gave me the quote anyway, you know? I got it right here.
We've got it.
Yeah. You have it, okay. So in this quote, there are some parts that he orders extra because he's not quite sure if he may need an, an extra, so he said it it won't go any higher.
This is a not to exceed.
Gotcha.
Um, the other thing is, the EGR cooler was changed last May. But Doosan only gives a ninety day warranty on your parts, on your replacement part. But Brian at Capital Tractor is fighting to get him to at least cover the EGR cooler, which is twenty-three hundred dollars. So he said, at least if they cover that, that helps, you know.
And was that, and that was the beginning of, that was the source of the problem?
Yeah, yeah. So, um, you know, and there's no way, I mean, I could probably try and call another dealer, but you know, it's in their garage, I'll tour part now. It's not like you can box everything up and take it somewhere else, take it at a price. Um, I did ask, is labor, it was all in one line. It didn't say what is, is labor rate one thirty-five an hour, which I thought was very reasonable for these days. He said, actually, it's going, it's going up to one forty-two or one forty-five, he said, first of March.
All right.
But he'll, he'll hold this.
What does he got? He's probably got a couple hours in it at least already, right?
Oh, yeah.
How old is this machine?
It's, um, fifteen, isn't it?
Yeah.
Bought four, three, four years ago.
Yeah.
And the, and the EGR?
EGR cooler.
Cooler, that was replaced last May?
Last May.
Just as part of regular maintenance?
No, it started leaking. So when it leaked the last time, it just blew white smoke out the exhaust.
Blue.
No, no coolant got into the zone, so it didn't hurt any. This time it didn't.
Okay, so, but what I don't understand is, is this thing some kind of self-contained, so there's a flaw in that that means it leaked? Or is something happening around it if it's leaked twice?
There was a flaw inside of that part.
Twice?
Well, it's not, it the new part failed.
Yeah, so there's been a flaw in that part twice?
Yeah. But you can't take it off of them because it's all part of the emission.
Right, right.
So, but we're gonna get a new one. The question is, who's gonna pay for it?
Exactly, exactly. He's pushing.
And could we be sure that we're not getting aftermarket parts?
No, they're all coming right from Doosan. And he said, he said, he, he, he has fought with them in the past about this because New Holland, which they also sell, he said they, they warranty their parts for one, sometimes two years. You know, their replacement part, but he said Doosan is, is ninety days. You know, their replacement part, but he said Doosan is is ninety days. Um, we did talk about. Pricing out a whole. A re manufactured lower end of the engine, but he said they don't offer, Doosan doesn't offer that, so. Um, so in this price, you get one new cylinder liner, one new piston. One new rod. He ordered two in case he needed another one. So may not have to, you know, he doesn't need it, but he wanted to put it in.
No, I got that, I got that.
And all the gaskets, fluids, all that stuff right there. So. And all he's waiting for is he okay and he'll go ahead and order the parts. He said he probably have the parts in three, four days and then they start putting back guys.
Uh, we just need a motion to approve the sole sourcing of the repair of the loader or not to exceed dollar.
Cynthia's usually good at.
And what is this capital tractor?
Yep, yes.
I make a motion to approve the cell source contract with Capital Tractor for repair of the loader. For an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand one hundred eighty nine dollars and eighty cents.
I'll second.
Motion made by Cynthia and. Seconded by Matt to approve the loader repair or single source award. Not to exceed fourteen thousand. Fourteen thousand eight hundred.
Fourteen thousand one hundred eighty nine dollars. Eighty cents.
And eighty cents, all those in favor signify the same line. Fine, any opposed? Motion carries. Alright. Hold the business.
So there's no specific, there's no specific town meeting business. It was just worn there and as we warn every town meeting.
And we're we're second, right?
We are first.
We're first? And is it six thirty?
Six thirty. Uh, first, six thirty, Monday night.
I thought you guys were first last year.
We were misremembering, remember, check the minutes, we need to start delaying.
I only have one thing for time meeting. On the warning and I did not catch it, but um maybe it's problem, maybe it's not. Article five, council of Arlington, adopt all budget article by Australian ballot, if so, do section. Seventeen VSA subsection twenty six eighty C. My only issue, my conundrum is. Spirit of the article is to. Enhance participation, so instead of a hundred and twenty five, hundred thirty people voting on an article or a budget or whatever. We include everybody that chooses to vote. Whether that's fourteen hundred people or six hundred people or eight hundred people, but. Where it's positioned in the warning is prior to the Australian, it's not Australian, it's on the floor vote.
It's a four vote, yes, it has to be a four vote.
It's had to be a four vote?
It's it's vague in state statute, but the best we can understand is that it, that because the default is a four vote. You use the method of voting on this that you're in when you're making this.
Because they're the ones, we 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 talked about that. They're the ones that have the right to vote on the budget now. They're the ones that have to vote to go to another fine. It's not the whole. That was my understanding.
I thought it was going in the article.
No.
I thought it was going to the articles too.
Other direction to be in the articles.
Yeah, if we were voting on Australian ballot.
Right, yeah.
Clarify that. I mean, I think that exactly.
The whole reason it came up. And I only caught it after the meeting last Monday.
Yeah.
It came up in a general question. I'm like, okay, I want to make sure I understand the entire.
That's right, and we were saying the community is gonna decide this, but it's actually no.
It just seemed to me, well, I'm not thinking about it.
No.
To the spirit of the article.
No, it's not, but it's not, it's it's not. I mean, it 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 there is an element of that in terms of the spirit. But in terms of where the right to vote currently resides, that too has to be changed.
And it doesn't go into effect.
Right, but we but we want to clarify that, um, so that people, so so that we have to be holding that vote.
On the floor.
Monday night, on the floor.
Yeah, that'll be part of the conversation with Tom Whalen and part of his like.
What are we voting on? Because there's gonna be an additional thing that we're voting on and it's not going to Australian ballot. Yes. I think that's really.
Well, and somebody could make a motion to do it by Australian ballot on the floor, right?
To go to Australia ballot, which is what we're doing.
No, but then you have to count them like right there. Don't they get out the two little cans? Yeah, I know. Paper ballot.
You know, I don't think Robin has anything ready. I mean.
We know.
You could have the vision, you can have people standing up and sitting down. You can you can have the yeses stand up and then they're, you know, count them. You don't have to have.
I just thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
It totally makes sense the way you explained it, the. Why it needs to happen.
Yeah, but we didn't make that, but we didn't make that point the other night because it just.
No, we didn't. You didn't. I thank you for the clarification.
Did we do this right?
No, thank you for, thanks for checking.
I I did have a conversation with John. He's gonna be here in the morning doing some other stuff downstairs.
Okay.
And he just wanted the the uh citation, statutory citation. So he was completely included.
Yeah, I'll I'll make sure that he's ready to go tomorrow when I need it. Um, okay.
Because Matt and I discussed it today. We both thought the same thing and.
Oh, yeah.
Wow.
That's the way I understood it, so.
It's not a big deal either way, but I just thought.
Makes perfect sense to me now.
Go against the spirit of it. The whole point of the the article, so. Anyway, I'm glad I brought it up just so we can have that clarification.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
By the way, we will see you all six and six thirty on Monday.
Yes. Okay, any other thing else for time meeting that we need to know about?
I think we're, everything's gonna go.
We've got our slide deck all set. We did our dry run.
The town board didn't really go over since we received.
So far so good. Also make sure John gets a copy of the.
I'm sure he.
Find it on the uh website.
Okay.
You can find the warrant.
Okay, I'll make sure that Robin has everything that's going.
Just make sure to get.
Yeah, I will, I will, yeah, that's on my list for tomorrow.
Okay.
Beautiful, thank you.
Enough. Alright, the other item is liquor license and this is uh. Uh, they already have their liquor license, but this is for the uh. Uh, remontos for outside consumption permit.
All the permits did not come in at the same time this year, so we're just gonna check those off now.
Okay, I make a motion to approve of an outside consumption permit. For Arlington Remontos LLC. Motion to approve.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Jamie to approve the outside consumption permit for Arlington Remontos LLC. All those in favor, signify the same. Any opposed? Motion carries is for the law, so that's approved. Alright. Uh, executive session for personal personnel and property, we need to establish the reason.
And can I have a few minutes?
You wanna go first?
No, I will go second.
You wanna go with it?
Yes, by all.
So you need personnel as well?
Yes.
Perfect.
I make a motion that premature discussion of personnel, property and legal issues would cause the municipality to suffer substantial disadvantage.
I'll second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Matt to establish the reason for the executive session as a personnel and property matter matter. All those in favor signify the same line. And when you enter into it, authorize, um, Mark and. Handle to, hum in the room and Matt, now the deck as well.
Okay, um, I actually make a motion to enter into executive session for discussion of said property. Legal and personnel issues and to allow Town Minister Nick Zayas, Highway Crew Chief. Mark Robinson and Liquid Tax Solicitor Kendall Jennings to remain.
I'll second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Matt, when you enter into executive session, all those in favor signify the same. It is. Important to hear the back and open session. I don't believe there's any decisions to be made from the discussions. So we will move on to maybe Town Minister reporting, any highlights you want?
Uh, frankly, I really. It was like an all over place week, um, but one highly that is one of me is. Now, actually, I don't think I do. I I'm just mostly happy without the town report came out at the end and really pleased with the service from the printer. Um, but ultimately, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback on that, so I'm really. Um, frankly, having talked to Bill Bott about this, he was really happy with having paid through as well. So very different than his style, but um, but this is very much, I'm so glad that the um. The actual explanatory details that mattered to the voters really shined in this one. So short of that, um, we're chugging along.
And thank you very much for the work on the slide panel. I thought that was. Even though we did some little tweaks on it, I think it was really good.
It, you know, it started out as a first draft and we built to a draft that I think we can all be really proud of. Um, and it'll be really helpful for the voters. So.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, warrants in order?
Yep.
Alright, I make a motion to approve check warrant report number WD number four dated two twenty one twenty five. Being the operational invoices of the Arlington Water Department. Key elements are uh Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance Premium five thousand ninety five, Fremont Power one thousand six hundred and thirty one. A motion to approve the warrant for a total of seven thousand eight hundred and nine dollars and thirty five cents.
Yes. Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Jamie to approve check warrant for WD number four. The total amount of seven thousand eight hundred and nine dollars and thirty five cents. All those in favor signify the same line.
Alright.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Alright, the next motion will concern the operation invoices of the town of Arlington itself. Key element are sand from Peckham, eight thousand three hundred ninety six. MES Service Company Fire Department helmets and hydrant pumps. Thirty five thousand one hundred and eighty seven, uh, salt, eight thousand four hundred and fifty six. And of course, health insurance premium sixteen thousand six hundred and twenty three dollars and twenty five cents. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve the total. Check warrant report number four dated two twenty one twenty five, motion to approve total of ninety five thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and sixty five cents.
Second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Matt to approve check warrant report number four and the total amount of. Ninety five thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and sixty five cents. All those in favor signify the same line.
Aye.
Alright. Any opposed? Garry. Just had a quick question on the water department order.
I'm sorry.
Five thousand ninety five a month for health spending. Is that monthly or quarterly?
No, that's two months.
Two months.
I believe, um, that looks like.
Because I was trying in my head to figure out, is it quarterly or?
Yeah, it looks like it's.
So we've paid out about six times?
Roughly. It it should be and then there's a.
Um, Dan, that.
Oh, no, Dan, Dan here.
Yeah, go ahead, Janet.
Um, for one, for every month for a family plan, it's thirty seven hundred dollars in in change. It's like thirty seven twenty six or something. The extra was because we subtracted Burr out when he left, but the insurance company then subtracted it again. So we had to put one back in and that's the thirteen thirty seven. What an eye.
So, thanks.
Thank you, Janet. Welcome.
So I guess we're all set. If there's any other business, if we drop for the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So we're adjourning until Monday the third, or do we?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, next Monday, it's coming Monday, a week from today.
It's town meeting night. And our first organizational meeting was the following Monday.
The second to last meeting of this government. Um, well, all in, um, so excellent.
Just a, you know, on the MES invoice, that was ARPA money.
Yes, that was.
Yes, good point, good point.
Okay, good, it's from ARPA.
Yeah.
I thought that was the case, but just because I looked at the items.
Thank you.
Alright, if there's no other business we brought for.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Matt and seconded by Jamie, we're. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Dan.